Do you want me to start the screen sharing?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. I want to move over so you can access the, actually, do you want to allow them to be over here? Or do you want us to be in the meeting?
We're meeting.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I take a little bit.
You should take a spot.
Oh, that's nice. Oh, that's nice. Number one. Oh, sorry about that.
Okay, so it's eight o'clock, we're gonna open the hearing for the Lucas and Abigail Way Open Space Residential Development Subdivision, or Open Space Development, Residential Development, as we call it, subdivision, Seven Charles Street and Two Forty-Nine April Street. And I just want to say, you can notice a different face here. Our chairman, Warren, is away this, for this meeting. On the anniversary cruise, so hope you have a fun, Warren. And so, we wanna, I just wanna go through some of the ground rules. We, we wanna get a general sense of the, you know, what, what the project entails, if you will, attorney man, or if I can call you Jill, to you all at times. And we'll certainly field any questions from people that are here, whether it be online or here. But I just want everyone to understand, it's not being voted on tonight, it's not gonna end tonight. It'll be continued, so you'll have multiple opportunities to speak, whether that mean tonight, the next meeting, and how we'll cover more in line. I just wanted to be clear about that. We're not gonna solve it all tonight, but we wanna share a lot of information if we can. So I guess I would open up with you and the applicant, if you wanna give a brief rundown. Oh, I gotta read this?
Yeah, I have to, yeah, we should be thinking about this.
Okay, I've got it. All right, good. Okay, notices here, like given that North Reading Community Plan Commission will hold a public hearing in Tuesday, February sixth, two thousand twenty-four, on room fourteen of North Reading Town Hall, and online at eight P M. on the application of John Brobeck for the site land review called Lucas Lane and Algo Way Open Space Residential Subdivision, Seven Charles Street, Two Forty-Nine April Street, North Reading, Mass. January two thousand twenty-four, dated January twenty-fourth. The property located at Two Forty-Nine April, Seven Charles, Amber Road, plus A B C, North Reading, Mass. In parentheses, map forty-five parcels, forty-two, thirty-two, forty, thirty-nine D, and thirty-C.
Thank you, good evening. Joanne here on behalf of John Brobeck, who's here this evening, in connection with a special permit to be able to develop this particular parcel of land as an open space residential subdivision. I know that it's not a common thing in town for, for OSRDs. They're a great tool, and your bylaw sets out nicely, you know, how we're gonna go about achieving, you know, the best utilization in open space. So basically, just to open you, so it's, we're proposing a twenty-six unit subdivision. It is comprised of two individual roads, and it'll be a total of fourteen lots, because we are going to try and actually develop multifamily duplex and single-family homes. The advantage of doing that, as you know from your bylaw, is to be able to consolidate development, but in addition to that, provide a variety of home choices and protect open space. I think that, they didn't yell, I don't know how many words it was.
Um, I will, shall we have it? Up or down? I'll try it earlier.
There.
Oh. Oh. Well. Doesn't matter. We'll stop the share for a moment.
Technical difficulties. And I thought it'd be easier for you to see this, because then it's up, you know, kind of.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I have, I have it here, and the others do, but for, for anyone in the audience, it's easier.
It is helpful. So let's, let's just walk through. I mean, at least we can eventually unload, and we'll be able to see everything. So, yeah. So the property itself has about thirty-two acres of land. It's a hundred, one million three hundred ninety-six square feet, as you can see on this slide. There's a tremendous amount of op land. It's, it's one million one hundred twenty thousand square feet of op land, and only three hundred seventy-six square feet of, of land. And the advantage of this particular alternative development that we're proposing is that we avoid all wetland impact. We basically even stay out of substantially all of the property. And I mean, we really have avoided the impacts that were originally shown in our initial submittal, submittal. So I'm just gonna explain that. So when we first submitted, we, we submitted a plan, and that plan was conventional, right? When you do OSRD, you have to show a conventional plan, but in addition to that, you have to show what are you gonna do, what's your, what are you gonna do with your concept plan? And when we showed, we had shown it, we were showing it with more conventional design. We were taking out a big bottom, I could show you on this, but a big bottom portion of the property, along the great slopes, and a lot of beautiful open space. So after we had an opportunity to really go through it, go out and look at the site, we said, you know what, don't take away this bottom parcel of land. Let's leave it open and undeveloped and undisturbed. It's beautiful, and it, it's in well with the Arrow State Parker Park that we abut. So we altered that plan, and that's, that's a bill you receive from me, showing fourteen lots. And that's the one where they have one multifamily proposal, which I, I have some examples of what those homes will look like in order to give a more, a, a, a more diverse housing stock, number one. Number two, we're, I'm not gonna say affordable, because that's like, I don't even like that word that much. More moderate pricing. It's not, you know, the, the large single-family home cost, which is what we're going to be able to do. So this slide right here was just going to show the existing conditions. It was just gonna show you exactly where Amber and Priscilla go. There's DCR has not even rights of, that they own a right of way going in. It's kind of a U, a Y shape. So we have those two roadways that bisect this property, but over which John, or whoever owns the property, its successor, has the right to travel, to use in any and all ways that you would use a roadway. So he can use it to access anything he wants. He chose not to develop those particular streets because of the impacts to the land. But doing it the way he did it in the alternative plan, with the smaller subdivision roads, made much, much more sense. So let's see if we can, ah, at least we have one. So this is the yield plan. So under, under the open space subdivision, the rule is this. They don't want you to overdevelop the property, just because you can put in, you know, more dense development. That isn't what your bylaws about. Your bylaws about, look, how much can you get in conventional sense? Show us what that is, and then we're gonna give you a little bonus, because we want you to do it the other way, but the bonus is about twenty percent. So right here, this particular conventional subdivision shows four individual roads, some of which actually do use the DCR roadways. And this particular subdivision is all twenty feet individual single-family home lots. And it will obviously have four subdivision roadways. Some of it requires wetland crossing, all the things that are permissible, because when you cross a wetland in order to access property, it's that limited project. So that's basically a project that has to be approved as long as you can demonstrate that you can protect the wetland via secure crossing. It just, nobody can just do it if you can't provide that surely. So that's what this particular plan shows. Now, we get into the alternate proposal. We're very glad we can actually see this. So as you can see, what we're doing is, if you notice, you have these two roadways. Let's see, wait. Oh, that's not a good thing. You can see the two roadways all the way here, the two wide roadways. Those are DCR rights of way. We are not developing and or using them. However, you see that bubble in the middle, right near the wetland? When the pro, when the current owner was doing some work, he actually disturbed that area. So we have an obligation, but we would acquire the property to actually restore that wetland. So part of our project and part of our applications will be noticed and intent to replicate and restore the wetland. But that is the only disruption, that has nothing to do with anything Mr. Brobeck's done, but in fact, something that had been done before that needs correction and remediation. So other than that, we're not in that way. So subdivision roadways, Mr. Brobeck is proposing to construct are this roadway right here, which is Abigail, and then this roadway that comes off of Charles, which is Lucas. So we're proposing two subdivision roadways. As I had mentioned, we're going to create fourteen lots with twenty-six living units. There will be nine single-family homes. Basically, the subdivision roadway at the top, it, it really does work better for single-family home lots than it does for multis, which is why we designed it like that. Then in the bottom, where we have the Lucas Lane. So, yeah, Lucas is on the bottom. We have basically four duplex units. So when we come in, they're duplex housing lots. And I'm gonna show you examples of what we're proposing. And then again, you'd have the one single lot that will access three multifamily buildings. All of these things are permissible under the bylaw, but I just wanted to point them out and go through it. Now, as you can see, I just said, what else are we going to do? We're gonna create a large amount of open space, and we're gonna create a public parking. And I'm gonna show you that right here. Usually, you can enlarge. How do you enlarge on this?
Control of us, maybe?
I wanted to show you the parking spaces we were creating.
Or is this PowerPoint?
This is PowerPoint.
Yes, usually on PowerPoint, I can do it, because there's like little, uh, there's a.
Oh, sorry.
I'm trying to get back to my. Oh, there's zoom in.
Okay. Huh, I mean.
Okay, you know what, I'm just gonna tell you where they are.
Okay.
So if you look to the PowerPoint, it, it, you see on Amber Road that comes in, right below Amber Road, can you do it, John? Right below Amber Road, we've created five parking spaces right before that, right there. So the purpose of that is, I think currently, people park on the street that's in front of, I think, I don't, Romeo's on the screen, I didn't see them here. But they may park like in front of Romeo's house and on that street. What we're proposing is actually to move people down and to create five parking spaces so they park on our property, which is the open space property, versus in front of somebody's home. So that, we put them there intentionally with that thought process. And that's what I wanted to point out to you.
Different thing to know is.
Oh, yes.
Septic system.
Oh, the septic system.
So, yeah, on the top street, which is Abigail, you know, is, uh, single-family houses have all the individual septics on their properties, as you can see. And then on the lower street, it will be a combined system that will utilize this area of that.
Right, so the other thing that's something.
For everything.
It'll be under the entire property here. So because we'll do this, this property as a condominium, it is basically called a common system, which is, which is allowable under Title V without any additional relief. It simply requires the presentation and acceptance by the Board of Health of a common system. I think in the maintenance plan, you know, basically, there's an operation, the maintenance plan, that is keep kept on file with the Board of Health.
Make sure it.
Yeah, exactly. And the bet, the beauty of it being a condominium is you don't have to seek recourse in the courts, but because it's condominium, it's statutory. So you have the right of lien, which is powerful. So if, if the condominium, like if one owner doesn't pay a share and something happens, it, you have recourse, the other condominium laws, versus having to try and force an HOA, which you can carry with them. So that's actually a better protection for them. So Abigail Way, Abigail Way is the one that's on the very top. It's four hundred fifty feet long, it's nine single-family homes. I did wanna point out that there are two homes that, and this is right at the top. So you can see right here, the two homes here will access their property over a driveway that we use over, I think that's Priscilla, over Priscilla. Is it Priscilla?
Is it considered a three? I know, John, or is it, is it driveway or a bridge?
That would be the one.
Okay. Yeah, the fire department is referring to a bridge in, you know.
Yeah, and that's because in the original plan, the one that we submitted, if you will, that showed more single-family homes, no multis, that did have a bridge, because our roadway went all the way back, I'm sure, right here, it actually crossed this wetland.
Okay.
So we did, oh, we.
I never seen that, but I was trying to resolve that, and I figured it was with the Abigail, you know, up there, but okay.
No, so the, and again, the beauty of this, no disruptions of the wetland, no need to fill, no need to cross. So, and we were able to take, in that original thing, it was a nine hundred something foot driveway. That's why you also made some comments about, I mean, the water department did, about moving is available. I mean, here, we only have four hundred seventy foot, seventeen foot subdivision road and a four hundred fifty foot subdivision road. So we are below the minimum for, um, the maximum, excuse me, for, uh, hotel, for subdivision roadways. Again, I just repeat what we would like to do. Go here. So all lots require a waiver from dimensional requirements, that's OSRD. So I just list them, because I think it's better to, to just upfront, that's what, that's the one of the requirements of OSRD are. You're trying to minimize the amount of consumption. And then all lots, every one of them has access to the open space. So not only does this particular subdivision provide access to the public, which I know is, um, let's see if you see it. Okay, he's not here. The, the other board member who's very interested in the open space.
Oh, um, Jeremiah, I.
Does he need a permit?
No, I don't.
Oh, I see, okay. Well, Jeremiah, I know we had a lot of conversation.
Oh, there it is.
I was, thank you. So we made sure that there was public access, parking, and each individual home has access. All alone. Excuse me. So now that we get to Lucas Lane, which is the, the access, the street on the bottom, that's the one with four duplexes, and then one lot with the three multi-families. The multifamily lot, we purposely designed it to have one common driveway. But if you'll notice, because we are anticipating comments from the fire department, we had ensured that there's fire access three hundred sixty degrees around the entire property. While multifamily homes, once you get above two family, we start to trigger different requirements for fire safety sprinkler, and we recognize and acknowledge that. But we also wanted to make sure that the fire department should be able to assist the degrees of access, which is just.
Can you, can you kinda show that? Now, I'm concerned about the, the multifamilies on that, on the ad.
Absolutely.
So where, where, where the fire department?
It is right here, and, and we did drive them, so here's the access. It comes all the way around. It comes through. And now, to the extent the fire department wants us to, to give them a better, we have the ability to flex and create it. This was really the purposes of showing you what we intend, and no matter what, we're going to provide three sixty.
So what's the material, though? Is, is it all asphalt, or are you trying to go on stone?
Because, yeah, because it's an OSRD, we would prefer that it be all stone, that the, that the fire department can drive around, so compacted stone. I mean, it's still gonna have issues relative to stormwater management, but at least it won't be pavement.
And it'll be an engineered gravel road, probably with some sort of geotextal out there. Right, yeah. Or geo grid, you know? And then, so John, you'll, if you're proposing that, because in the other part of the law, you're gonna do an auto turn with like an S B forty fire traffic.
Yeah, we'll do the whole layout of the auto turn.
Okay.
As part of the subdivision product.
So. I just went through, I just said Lucas Lane, you only have one common septic system. And again, I kind of just listed all of the, all of the characteristics of each individual subdivision roadway. I always like when people give me a waiver list, and I know that you, you do particularly care about it too, and so do I, because it just allows me to keep control and, and understand what's required. So the waiver, I'm just gonna explain each one. So the first waiver allows slopes greater than twenty-five percent. Your entire bylaws focused on the fact that open space is going to provide usable area, that none of this area is going to provide space that people can't use. So they say, look, if you have slopes that are greater than twenty-five percent within, um, your open space, you need a waiver. Where we have the slopes that are greater than twenty-five percent is right in this area here. And then, and we intentionally withdrew all of our development work from that. So in order to put it in the open space, we had to actually make it part of a open, I mean, in order not to have it be a development area, we had to make it an open space. So there is a substantial portion of that, and you can see it when you really zoom in, that does have a substantial slope. But again, based on how it was supposed to provide op land versus sloped area, we do provide, if you will, that minimum amount of slope we've been looking for. Does anyone need a water? Nothing to do with dry. Thank you. No, right, no. So that's the first request. And I'm gonna actually skip, if you don't mind, to the bottom, which is to allow a greater percentage of wetland in the open space than the percentage on the property. So every single solitary town I present in front of that has an OSRD has this same exact provision. And what it, it, it actually shouldn't say, you, you need to have, you can't have a certain amount of open wetland. It should say, you need to have a minimum amount of open op land. Because then it's easier, because I wanna give you more of wetland. I'm going to give you two hundred thousand square feet more of wetland area to protect, but I am needing the minimum. So the reason why I specifically cut into primary and secondary is to show you how that provision really should be flipped. So I can give you primary land that's more than fifty percent of the total area. It ends up being substantially all op land and only fifty-six thou, fifty-six thousand square feet of wetland. But because I have a secondary area, which is two hundred twenty-one thousand square feet of wetland, I skew the number, but when I separate them, I don't. That's why I did it, just to kind of demonstrate to the board. So however you would like me to present it, I can remove the primary, secondary, but I did that to facilitate an understanding of why the bylaw in every town is written like that maybe should be focused on op land, not land. And then, so now I'm just gonna go through the rest of it. So after we discussed, I said, we need a reduction in all the dimensionals. Obviously, though, the one dimensional waiver that is never allowed is the fifty-foot perimeter. Buffer, no waiver for any lots that border on the exist, border existing homes. And we honored that, and it's in the updated plan that I believe Ms. McKnight asked us to submit, showing the fifty-foot perimeter all around. So what we're seeking is to actually have lots that are only twenty thousand scripty in area. We're looking to have eighty, and all of these are fifty percent, until I, I've talked about it, eighty percent lot frontages for lots one through four, seven through fourteen. However, those two lots that we show with those driveways actually only have twenty feet of frontage, because we're simply matching the amount of driveway that we have going over the DCR. That's why, because we really didn't wanna have a driveway, we don't own the property, so we would have to start off big and go small, which makes no sense, you know, to do it, because of the way we have to access over the DCR property. And we're asking for twenty-foot setbacks, again, only to the extent within the interior of the OSRD. Twelve-point-five side setback, again, only within the OSRD, to the extent lots of lot each other in it. A twenty-five-foot rear setback. And then, obviously, we're looking for reductions in how much the maximum amount of building area we can actually occupy, because it's, we have an OSRD. And same thing with minimum open space. You know, we're going to provide a huge amount of open space, but the lots also still need some of this open space. And we're saying, let's provide thirty percent. And the reason for the final waiver is because currently, you say that you can only have twenty-five percent of the buildings can be multifamily structures, and we're asking to make it thirty-five percent, which would allow us to do those three, three, and three. To do the nine.
The rest of the fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five.
Exactly. I apologize, yes, it's fifty, single-family, twenty-five duplex, twenty-five, yes.
Okay.
And so we skew it because of the health.
Yeah, okay.
So I just wanted to give you an idea of what we're doing. I recognize, I, I had a hard time seeing this too. So I asked the engineer, who works for John, Brendan Fiver, to do me a favor, just show me the, the areas of the property that are going to be disturbed, and that's what he did. So out of the one million, for almost four hundred thousand square foot property, the total amount of disturbance is four hundred eighty-two thousand five hundred thirty-two square feet. So that's it, that including everything, that's including all lots, all streets, and the septic system, and any stormwater basins, and the trails. So I made sure that we looked at every single number, and that amounts to thirty-five percent of the entire property. So we are leaving sixty-five percent totally untouched. And I did list those areas. So now, the open space is nine hundred and eighteen thousand square feet. And you can see it, I mean, it's, it's, it's really much better to see it kind of like this. You can see where all the open spaces. You can see where it's all adding to the actual benefit of the development, in addition, providing access to that Arrow Parker. So we really are expanding usability at Arrow, Arrow Parker tremendously. And we do provide a buffer on all sides of that multifamily project. So just to break it down, the open space, undisturbed, is almost nine hundred thousand square feet. Of that, six hundred and twenty-one, almost six hundred and twenty-two thousand square feet are actually op land. Only twenty thousand are op land, are, of, of the total op land are into being disturbed. And then, as I had said before, it's two hundred seventy-six thousand square feet of wetlands. And all of that is going to be perpetually protected. I know, and I, I apologize about being pedantic, but I'm gonna go through the open space provisions and just for the benefit of the public, and then if the board has more questions, you can ask me. So the open space is more than fifty percent, which is, that's nine hundred and eighteen, it's sixty-five percent. The open space contains absolutely no structures or exclusive use areas. What your bylaw does allow is to allow the trails. So we have playgrounds, trails, so the people can walk through the backyards, walk around, as well as the public. We are proposing to put the septic system in that common space behind the multifamily lot, which is also permitted. And we do have a couple of stormwater management features that will be in the open space. However, you are only allowed to do certain types of rain, rain guard bio, what can you mention? Bio-tension. So I think you cannot put in detention basins, right? And that, so I think the purpose of that is to try something that's other than a murals, when it's attractive. As I said, substantially all of the open space is undisturbed, and it occupies all wetland substantial portion of the offering. The most important thing for your open space, and it's clear, because it's written everywhere, is that there's connectivity and preservation of wildlife corridors. So when you go back to this particular slide, you can see how we actually provide connections throughout. You can have wildlife corridors all up and down our particular property. In addition, connectivity does not mean if a street runs in between you, you don't connect, because everybody recognizes you're gonna have streets, you're gonna have access. And the entire purpose of the DCR property is to provide access. So now, the DCR properties do bisect our open space, but it provides the public with general access to all of our open space. So in addition to that, the open space has multiple forms of access. Again, you could, oh, I went the wrong way. You can see where they all are. Anytime you have areas behind the homes, we provided for a trail, a little behind it, so that people could use the roadways and access behind. So you can see where the cul-de-sac of Lucas actually is able to be accessed for the open space, and the cul-de-sac of Abigail, same exact thing, which was an intentional done. We didn't put in parking in those areas, because after our conversation, we thought that it was gonna be better to concentrate the parking in the open space that is part of the OSRD, but off of the number. So again, we provide a lot of parking spaces, and the open space, so this is what Ms. Jordan had actually alluded to. The open space is gonna be owned by, owned and maintained by a condominium association. However, what we do and are required to do under your OSRD is to grant the town under the, under the custody of the Conservation Commission, a perpetual conservation restriction. So when we do that, we will get the approval of the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, which means the only way that can be changed, modified, terminated, by literally a legislative act, it is perpetual. So you know how many times people are like, oh, that's only a thirty-year restriction? Well, special permits, when they have a condition, can put in place things that go beyond thirty years. But this particular provision and statute extends for, is perpetual. So I promised to show you an example of what the homes would look like. These are large homes. We're going to do front load and side load because of the way those properties are situated, but we wanted to give you an idea. These are typical townhouse duplex. These are typical townhouse duplex properties. You know, they have nice living space behind and in front. You know, you can see every, every single solitary home in this particular subdivision will have indoor parking, every one of them, at least two car garage. That is something that John is very focused on. Because around here, you really need to get your car out of the snow. We ought to have snow again. So that's what this is. Then I wanted to show you a multifamily. A lot of people get a little concerned in your bylaw actually points out, you know, the concern about having the, the fronts of the properties two aligned. So you have this one big strip that you kind of look like you're, I don't know where. So these actually, in this particular subdivision, have pushes and pulls. And they go behind and go forward. And here again, we will try to side load some garages to the extent possible. But we are just giving you at this point, just a concept to chew on. This is not what we're proposing. These are simply concepts to, to get people understanding what we're proposing, when we say multifamily townhouses. Because while the board may get it, I don't know that the public really readily says, oh, a townhouse means you have to have a structure side by side. And that basically is our overview presentation. If the board has questions for either John or me or the public, you're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I do. We have a couple. And I'll try to just keep it to some of the ones that I'm seeing more from the town, even the butters. And then, you know, we'll get, spread that out to other people on that, on the commission. One of, one of the things, I go right to the butter, Tom Romeo, I don't know if Tom is on.
I see, I see attorney to Julio.
I, I am on, can you hear me?
Hi, Tom. This is, I read your, your email to Danielle. And I just wanted to, you know, acknowledge you and then in the letter that I wrote. You know, one, one of the, one of the questions I think you had is a good question. And maybe it's best, you know, office related, I'm sure Attorney Man has seen it. But what's, what say you with the comment that these are two separate lots?
So the property is all owned by a common owner. The fact that they're separated by the DCR property is, is not a separation. They're, you can be separated by, by streets all the time. And these properties, these streets for the DCR are only ever going to access Harold Parker. So the bylaw, I, I was actually just looking for the subdivision. There's actually a provision in it that this connectivity is not, is not impeded, interfered with, or denied by virtue of a right of way or a street. Connectivity is provided when you have the ability to walk and access. So the fact that the DCR rights of where are there is actually kind of better. So you don't have a home going there. You have a beautiful right of way to get to the park. So it's almost, it almost is more a common, an open space residential subdivision.
Tom, do you, did you hear that answer?
Yeah, I, I'll let my, I'll let my attorney who was on answer that.
Yeah.
I'd be interested to hear that, your, your response to that.
Good evening. Now, yeah, Jim DeGiulio, I'm representing Mr. Romeo. With respect to that specific question, I think the connectivity issue in the bylaw relates to the open space issue and not with respect to the lots. The, the bylaw specifically provides for a special permit for a cluster development when you are proposing six or more buildings or structures on, on, on a park, on a tract of land, on a tract of land. Or if there are contiguous lots that were in common ownership at the time of the bylaw. And neither of that seems to be proposed. And if you look at the aerial plan that was shown to us earlier, it seems to appear that the, these are two separate subdivisions. And what that would do is that obviously, if they are two separate subdivisions, and they appear to be two separate subdivisions, it would kept, change the calculations with regard to the open, open space. I don't know if that answers your, your, your question.
It, it, it does. I appreciate you taking a swing at it. I'm just not sure if I can finish, but I, I think it's two different roads in a single subdivision is the way I'm kind of reading it. And the reason why I opened with the question about the two lots, it was something that Tom had raised in the email in that they, you know, to be a, you know, a subdivision with, with one lot, he was looking at it as like two separate, these are two separate lots, or the way it was, it was separated by the DCR roads or something like that. And I thought Attorney Man had kind of addressed that subject with the roads. But again, I, I look at this one property, it had the easement collar or whatever, ownership of DCR roads through it. And the fact that there's two different ways to get into this open space development, I, I don't know, Danielle, is there any restriction that, that says you can't have two roads into subdivision?
I, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe that's something we'll look into.
I'd be happy to.
Yeah, because it's, it's a valid thing you're raising. I just, I'm not seeing it that way, but again, I'm not certain that you are.
So in that, in a word play out, this property is all in one. It's just when DCR was granted the roadway ownership, because DCR wanted to be able to own and create those access points. That's what actually created the difference in the levels, A, B, C. Number one, number two, when you read the duplicability, it is, if you look at section 200 dash 48, it says one or more division land in the cumulative result in an increase of six more residential lots on a parcel or contiguous parcels of land. And it's pretty clear that.
It's a contiguous parcel.
Yeah, I mean, I, I definitely understand.
I don't see, I don't see line with saying you can't have two points of access or, you know, or the roads need to connect, for instance, you know, because you could have a circular road that goes through your land and out. And the, or not, you know, I don't, I don't understand. But anyways, we, I promise all parties, you know, will look into that. So that's one. And the other one, Tom, and, and more, but I just, it was a comment on previous work performed lawsuit in, in play, I think there is, you know, what is being restored? Will everything be restored? Well, I can say from just looking at the plan, we see that the northern, you know, former disturbed wetland on the DCR road is part of the plan to restore. I can't speak to the, the, the claricutting that happened on the previous owner that came in. If you want to speak to that, John, or, or Attorney Man, like what, is there a plan to restore anything that was claricut?
Sure. So as far as what we're supposed to remediate anything within the wetland area, and if there's some issues, we're going to let everything go back. DCR likes some of it because then they have access and they want to continue to keep the fire line. And then Attorney DeGiulio and I can discuss some of the elements of the order that was issued by the court. And we have no problem doing that, you know, Mr. Romeo, Attorney DeGiulio, I mean, Attorney DeGiulio and I can most certainly discuss because there are certain elements of that order that said, look, if you're going, you know what the order was about, right? Okay, so everybody, so when, when the roadway was going to still access over Amber, that is clearly how Mr. Romeo accesses home. So he was very concerned, what are you going to do? Are you going to impact my access rights because his mailbox is in the middle, there are other aspects to it? And the whole decision is, look, you cannot walk the right to use the road, which we're not going to anymore. But you cannot walk that right. And if and when Mr. Bill or whoever would have been the successor created an issue and impeded your ability to continue to access your property, we needed to restore that. So at this point, I have not had discussions with John, and I'd rather than not block my legal document here, but I will absolutely have a conversation with Attorney DeGiulio. And any obligations by our six, our predecessor in interest will become ours. And we will, we will absolutely address this.
Yeah, that's acceptable to me. I'll be able to raise to go here, so that can.
I, I, I would, I would ask that my attorney finish his, his remarks before I make any comments, please.
On what exactly?
Well, I'd like, I'd like to be heard on, on everything that's been being proposed here. Again, not to.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. We're, we're, be specific as far as what we just talked about, two different things. One was whether or not this is on one contiguous parcel and can be considered a, you know, acceptable under the.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, point of order, Mr. Chairman. Is that, is that comment coming from the applicant or through the chair?
From the chair.
Okay.
I said what we were just discussing. I'm not saying it was settled. I'm saying that's what we just discussed. Then we moved on to, and I moved on to, and I have that right as the chair. I moved on to your next comment. And please keep in mind, I started with your letter here, so I, I'd like a little respect for that. Okay, so secondly, I, I could have started with a million other things going out to the other members. I started first with you, Mr. Leo.
There was, there was no disrespect intended, Mr. Chair. I didn't, I didn't know who was asking the question. That's my only, my only. I would just, it, it, so excuse me if you took that the wrong way. I, I just.
I'm just saying, I'm trying to, I, I opened up the meeting saying, we're going to try to do a review. And then I had a couple of questions, and I wanted to, out of respect for you, Mr. Romeo, I wanted to ask the questions that you posed to Danielle in your email. And that's why I started with this. We're not selling all time. I just want to be clear about that.
No, and I appreciate that. I just, I just wanted my attorney to address some things that Attorney Man had, had stated in her presentation and the, the litigation that, that followed. And, and the other things that I had mentioned in my email to Danielle.
Okay. So.
Is that, is that okay for counsel to answer?
Sure, sure, why not?
All right, thank you.
So, so we, the concerns that we have, and I'll be happy to talk to Attorney Man about this. I, I haven't had an opportunity to do that. But the concerns that we had is that we don't think that the proposal appears to meet the requirements for consideration of a special permit for a cluster development in many ways. But particularly, the, the bylaw provides for track and land for six or more structures on a track of land. These are not contiguous parcels. These three parcels that are being proposed are separate parcels. They've not been held in common ownership. To my knowledge, they have never been held in common ownership. They've been held by, I believe, the family members of the, the Hellchecks. And I'm referring to the basic requirements of, of a cluster of development. At least one of the tracks that is being proposed to be used, and I believe it's Track C, is not proposed as having six or more units, to, to my understanding. And again, I want to make it clear, these are not contiguous lots. And that's one of the reasons why we're suggesting that, again, looking at the aerial plan that we're, we're seeing now up on the screen here, it does not appear to be contiguous at all.
If I can stop, if I can stop you there, and you, you're making a valid point. But as I said before, I think what we'll do on this one particular item, and you can put a lot more of what you just said in detail to an email to Danielle. And Danielle will, will get that out to our council. Because I think it's a fair question, and it, it's an important one, right? Else, else you really can't, you know, go forward with this kind of, this permit. So you're raising their fight. We'll, we'll try to get an answer, an opinion from the town on that one.
Oh, in, in its fear, and I.
Hopefully, still, if board makes that determination, I just want to be clear about that too. But to be fair, since we're not attorneys up here, we'll have our attorney look at it. And then we'll take that information and that'll inform us on that item. So again, Attorney DeGiulio, I hope I got your name right, sorry. I, I want, I think you're going to get more opportunity to speak. I think that's an important question. If you could focus your energy on that one right now, and we'll do the same. We just, again, this first meeting, we didn't want to get way into it. And out of respect for the Chair, Mr. Pierce, I didn't want to get too far into it because he wants to be part of this process as well. And he, he unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. So I think we'll leave it at that, if that's okay with you. I will, I, I was going to go into Danielle, some of the letters on the town, of the town. I thought those are important, but I think I'll just pass, go just for initial comments to the members. So I'll go out to you, Ryan, if you have any initial comments.
Yeah, and if somebody's going to probably get a little far upfield where you are tonight, I think it's always good to kind of give info when we got it up front anyway. So, you know, one, I'm sure Mr. Romeo will probably disagree, but just on the parking front, I mean, I think it's a valuable resource of the town. I wonder how you got up arrived in five spots. Looks like we got opportunity there. I mean, I'm sure there's a response, so we can, we can kind of take that offline and with consideration down the road, as far as Amber goes, as far as Priscilla goes, and I know this from experience in town, in other areas where Harold Parker is accessed and the town has made provision for access. When it's not clearly delineated or even, you know, I don't know, like a split rail fence or something, it becomes a point of contention recently on, down, like when you, with two of, two people who bought a fire road that nobody really ever do was a fire road, or people try to, who do know and try to walk on it, a butters yell at them and think they're trespassing and it's a problem. And I see up on, I'm sorry, it's, Abigail's in the top one?
Yes.
Between Abigail, the, the two adjacent driveways and the adjacent homes, there is no, like, there is no portion of that cul-de-sac that allows public access. Like, you're on some of these property one way or the other, when you leave that cul-de-sac. So there is no.
There's a, there's a strip on the end that is.
Is there? I just not seeing that's okay.
It's, it's really hard to see.
Okay, well, in that case, I, I give no worries.
As you literally, also as you drive up the street, there'll be a track on the end on the backside over here.
Well, that's pretty rough. I'll wait to get to that paper on it.
Yep.
And then you, what, and then you walk up there and walk across the driveways?
You're not going to walk across the driveway. There's, there's a good amount of wetland in that area. So, you know, the natural path to enter would be through this facility here, which is why we provided that parking.
Right.
You are walked in over here. I mean, you know, I'm sure we have another dry summer, have had it. But yeah, there is a, there will be a provided path.
So there's not really a good access there.
There's not really a good access.
That's kind of like the worst ones. What we're trying to do is just provide access that you could use the intermittent areas. But we can, I mean, we more than willing to add trails as we continue.
Okay, all right.
And we will, by the way, we should have probably put it on, and we will get there. I didn't know how detailed the special permit plan should be. But we did, I think we talked about it, we planned on having not kiosks, but like a little sign and a nice plaque saying, you know, entrance point, public parking. And then it would be great, we probably would like to put up split rail fence around the parking. So just so people don't, you know, pull too deep in. And because we're very close to wetland, we don't want people to kind of harm the proper around it. So I think we probably will end up putting split rail fence. So for our next, next iteration, we will definitely do so.
The other problem was on the end of Lucas there, that, that fire road, it definitely gave you the gravel loop there. I think it would also be a good idea to probably restrict vehicular traffic aside from like a chain or whatever, you know, breakaway chain or something like that. So that's just clear that that's a fire loop only and not a.
Yeah, a couple of boulders and breakaway chain.
Yeah, exactly, something along those lines. And that, along the same idea on the backside of those townhouses, you know, some sort of landscape buffer that just kind of separates that development from that kind of parcel, I guess, with DCR.
The DCR.
I don't know, going in, right?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Without that, you know, you could definitely end up with the plastic six-foot fence. I think if we could plan on a landscape buffer, it'd be a much nicer solution to kind of preserve the.
Yeah, we're trying to do the best we can. So maybe though we could put up, split rail fence would be pretty, they're, they're very country and it doesn't block your vision at all. So we could easily put in a split rail fence that would allow, you know, growth, but still kind of create that separation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, you are not taking comments on the, the proposal? You're just focused right now on whether or not these are two developments? You don't want to hear comments on the other issues that have been presented?
Yeah, I think what I'm doing is kind of fulfilling what I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, which is we're giving a brief overview, which Attorney Man did, she gave a brief overview of the project. I opened it up to our, our board, and I asked questions as you go. I'm going to, I'm going to kind of hold back on most of them for now. And right now, we're on the second member. That's, unless we missed some of the meeting, that's what we're doing here, so.
I didn't miss any of the meeting. I didn't miss any of the meeting. What I'm concerned about is that there are some representations that have been made that aren't correct. This, the plan is showing Amber Road as being a right-of-way. It's not a right-of-way. It's owned by DCR. It's a public way owned by DCR. There's access issues, there's site distance issues.
Attorney Mann, does it say anywhere in the plan, right-of-way, or in the application?
There are rights-of-way, but it says that they're all in fee. Those, those are, and they're not public ways. They are most certainly not public ways. Also, the reason why you identify them as the right-of-way is because that's the purpose for which they were actually granted. So, if you read all the deeds, that's the reference points. However, I make it abundantly clear that we do not own them, that they are owned by DCR in fee. However, the purpose of them is rights-of-way. And they are private. They are not public. The only people who are entitled to use them, DCR can open them for public to use, but they are not ownership of, like, Abel Street. And we only have other than DCR and the Orient, right? And it's anybody who's a successor and interested A, B, and C. Those people have the right to use it. And I think, I don't know what Mr. Romeo's title is, but I'm assuming he has the right to use the beginning of A.
Okay. So, back to Mr. Kara.
My last call would just be on the sidelines on Lucas. I know, I think that's come up before. I'm sure you'll.
We have.
Get it all out of the traffic study, but yeah, that's, that's a tricky little spot there, so.
Right, so we're gonna end up, and we, and we didn't, believe it or not, we actually moved where it was, because we had. Do you remember? Yeah, so we had some issues, so we moved it, but during the subdivision process, we actually will have the traffic, what we'll show the sideline, we'll show all of that.
Thanks, Ryan. Jeff, do you have comments?
No.
I think we're good. I know the last time we spoke, and you presented some things, you've addressed those issues that we talked about the first go-around. I think that this here is much clearer than, than your last one, yeah.
Karen Meyer, do you have any comments? Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, I, I think that, in comparison to what we, the original proposals that we saw, I think this is evolving in a, in a positive direction. And I, I was pleased at these changes, so. But that's, I'll keep it to that for now.
Okay, appreciated.
Again, I love a whole way, because we got to the driveway, going back to those townhouses. Just to mention, I was wondering what the intent is there, is that they can put twenty feet, twenty foot, or try to go for twenty?
Oh, we, we only have to, so, right way to, I thought the F P. I don't know, whatever that is, that fire code, I thought maybe when I had access to more than.
It's been two lane road.
Isn't it? It's something, so we, every, every common drive, and even the drives that go over DCR, go up twenty. That, that's the intention.
Okay.
And if, I mean, we thought that that was perfect. We didn't want to go too large, so we thought that that would last.
Now, sidewalk.
Pardon?
Sidewalk, sidewalk.
Oh, sidewalks in the south. We didn't even put them in yet. I mean, we can't.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, we have, we have.
If they're not represented now, and what you have to find way for. Yeah.
If the town would like us to put them in.
It's just a long, you know, it's a long, it's, it's a narrow road, you know, it's twenty. It, it is a long way to get to the back there, so I think you want some.
Yeah.
But I think one of, again, it's a different kind of subdivision, so we're not looking for two sidewalks on both sides.
Are you talking also about the common driveway to extend it?
Yeah, the one, well, yeah, the one that.
Right, you want it. Yeah, and I would ask that maybe we do it in something a little different, not a four-foot, you know, wide. And we'll have to talk about that, because it has to be handicapped accessible. Once we put in a sidewalk, anything, any. Oh, it's on common, no, it's on private property. I don't have to, so. I had to think about that. I talked to an architect, how I have to do it. I, I, I will, will come back with an answer.
Yeah, I'm not looking for you to.
Yep. Obviously, subdivisions.
How they exactly how it's gonna look or anything.
In your town, we require it on one side at least, so we'll have a handicapped accessible sidewalk on, on one side of each subdivision.
Okay.
Yeah, this sounds well, is to go right up the north side.
Right.
And all the, right? Door, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Ryan. And I think, again, for, out of respect for all the people that showed up tonight, I'd like to open it up to some people out here. If you want to get up and speak or ask a question, you're welcome to. You just, just give me your name, so we have that for record, and ask for it if you're interested.
I would like to speak on behalf of Mr. Romeo.
I, I'd like to give some other people an opportunity, sir. I think you've had an opportunity. And again, I've told you. I've told you already a couple of times now, we're not gonna try to solve everything tonight. And.
I'm not.
I was saying it or what? I'll say it again if you want.
I, I'm not trying to solve everything tonight. I'm just trying to bring some concerns to the board's attention.
So, sir, what I suggest you do is put that into an email and send it to the planner, Danielle, and we'll all share that with the commission, and it'll come up on the next meeting where we have our chairman here. Try to be clear with you. So, that's gonna be it, okay? I'm not gonna recognize you again. All right, I'd like to hear from other people in the meeting, whether that be online or in, inside the hall there. So, anybody wanna?
Yep, Jean Hattie, two forty-seven Abel Street. I'd like to get a little more detail on the two forty-nine piece of this. You didn't go into very much detail on that.
We'll go into that.
The, the long Lucas road that's, um, up on Abel Street, just so the town, so the board knows, two forty-nine and three.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good one. So, in, in detail, we've got four, I lost my mouse. There it is. We've got four duplexes as you enter the road. It's gonna be a standard right-of-way. Well, I don't know, remember the exact length, but it's more or less fifty feet long to a cul-de-sac, where it's gonna terminate just before the wetlands part of it. We're gonna provide a landscape buffer against the southern side of the road. And then there will be a common driveway for three multifamily buildings out back, which would be isolated by the wetland. There's open space upwind, and along with the eleven on the other side.
And just so the board knows.
Can you answer my question?
Yeah.
Is your home, is your home right here?
Yeah, my, my.
I just wanted to make sure. I just wanted to, yes.
My name is Nick Hattie. I'm at two forty-seven Abel Street, and you're just pointing out. Because I guess what my wife is trying to say is we live at two forty-seven, and first of all, that is not what our property line looks like. Our property line is different than that, than what is shown there. However, as the speaker said, we can get into this stuff later. On the corner of both, on the corner of each corner of my property, houses a telephone pole. They've both been taken out three times in the years that we've lived in. So, I think Ryan addressed it earlier about the traffic there, on the traffic side. Yeah, that's a huge corner for accidents. And to put more housing in there, it's gonna cause a lot more traffic in that ass, at that corner. So, that's a concern of ours. That, and that's not what our property line is like.
Yeah, I mean, I believe this was surveyed, but, but, you know, we'll, we'll go back, and we'll be, we'll most certainly address it. That's not an issue. And as I said, when we're, when we go through subdivision, we have to go through certain traffic regulations, and we have to cite them. And if there's an issue, then we'll address it. We either relocate, but we will eventually, if you have concerns, and you want to see something special, feel free to reach out to either John or me. I have no problem talking to you and giving.
Well, I, I know right after two forty-nine, there's a big rock cliff in the corner, and it's an abstract.
Right here, you say that, there's.
And there's a hill up the street further that everybody comes flying down the hill. And a number of times, the police department uses my driveway as a speed trap.
Oh, gosh. Yeah.
So, you add all this into, we're gonna put all this housing in, people are gonna be trying to pull out of it.
A longer driver with multiple ramp posts?
Yes.
And we're going to, as I said, we're going to address it. So, the requirement is that we ensure that we have sufficient site access, and that we don't create any sort of a traffic issue. So, we, we will, so what we will provide also is a traffic report. So, it's not just us saying, oh, in, in the town, by the way, we're using. So, I, I, I don't know, the reviewing engineer, when the town has that to, to manage those types of things.
And we've about reviewed it, but the department has included, was probably kind of added similar concerns. So, we might be looking at some traffic coming in that area, things, strategies, do, ahead of that. So, thanks for the work.
Good question. So, you have a demo existence that we're building on?
It is quite a bit electrical, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Are you taking a little bit of the smile off of that, the, the one that I mentioned?
It's not part of our property. So, this, there wouldn't be an intention to.
It's a slip right here, right? I see what you mean, my.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's all rock face right in there.
And there's multiple accidents, so.
Yeah, it's a very blind.
Yeah.
And as you continue up to handle, you got that hill, and everybody comes flying down.
Yeah.
So, you can be leaving, whatever you're doing on this edge of that rock, that's kind of clear, you know, and just to improve that sideline.
Yeah, we definitely will, we'll probably end up, you know, on subdivision plan, and it probably happens to the site distance stuff. So, a site distance season, so we require that there be no vegetation.
Are you also on that? I noticed that, that structure is visually looks smaller. I, I didn't think it was one of the duplex, but then you laid it out, said that those would be the duplex units right there. Is there a possibility to just make that a single, so that you would be just less?
So, we don't, you know, it's possible that we'll combine them. I mean, that is not like the definite location of where they're gonna be. And I don't know. I mean, we really would ideally like there to be a duplex there. And at this point, we're not married to the location of anything other than kind of the general layout. You know, we really are married to essentially where the two roadways come in, and how in fact we have to chalk that road down with the, with the multis. But, yeah, we're gonna look at every element.
Yeah, I guess I'm just concerned about sightlines. That's also, if there's a big mass there, and you pull up to the end of the street, you're trying to leave subdivision, you can't even see down to April, and as is pointed out, we all know in town, people come whipping around their corner.
Right, so where our driveways have to be, so this is, this is literally our, that's what I said, our, our best option, right? This is what we would love to have. But, as we work through the subdivision plans, we don't know if something is going to change, if we're gonna have to work with some of the changes, if some of the results of our inspection, you know, investigations yielded a different change. So, right now, at most, that lot would be a two, a two unit. At, it, it could be one, it could be nothing. We don't know what it would eventually be, but yeah, we're looking at all options still.
Okay.
It's almost like a drain or swell right there.
Yeah.
Street too.
Yeah.
Hard, how long ago?
Okay, great question. Do you, do you have another one?
No.
Tonight, like I said, please, you know, come with more, feel free to contact the planner, you know, the email or anything like that. This, that might give you time to get your thoughts on paper. Sometimes it's easier than getting up speaking or whatever.
Absolutely.
You know, it'll get, it'll get a good audience. We all read everything prior to the meeting, and then usually it comes up in the meeting, so if you feel that's a better way.
Yeah, hi, I'm Bob Johnson. My wife, Linda, and I own Fort Charles Street, which is directly across from where I live, the old road we began. We're very concerned about a couple of things. Number one, we've been experiencing a lot of runoff from the development up on Charles Street above us. The new construction that's taking place here. Charles Street's been a mess, to be quite frank, for the last several years. Stones, silt, mud, and it's, I guess I'm concerned that what will that upper development off of Amber do to impact Charles Street, especially during the construction, and how is that gonna be managed? And secondly, the way the stormwater management, I'm very concerned about for that upper development. Is this gonna have its own drainage system? Is it gonna tie into the storm drains on Charles? Is that, I, I don't even know. Fuck, that's really at the point, but, because I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about that, because, again, we're concerned about literally being swallowed out of our homes.
Yes, I'm sure. I drove the downtown, I've seen the extension down there. So, I'm aware of what you're saying. This, I'd say two-thirds of this area is gonna discharge to the wetlands here. There will be a initial portion of the sloped road as you enter the site, which is gonna discharge to a surface water treatment area right here. The intention is to maintain almost all of the runoff on the property.
So, the surface water, you, you're talking about retention fund?
Yes. Okay. Nothing giant in it. There was only, like, two hundred feet of road, if that. I'd say probably a hundred and seventy feet of road that has areas to protect.
What about the greater, that would, you know? I mean, that house consuming over there is, is pretty high up off this street.
I mean, there's, there's a good amount of content. And what is to meet the, the town's standards a lot of the way done. So, it's gonna meet the town's standard before we can sign, before that's.
In general, there's site slopes away from Charles Street to Wetlands on the property, right?
Correct, yeah, it, it does have a sharp increase, and that it gradually will up up there. Yes.
Amanda Johnson, I think, you know, again, part of the application will be the stormwater analysis, calculations. Mr. Noel, the building was prepared to ask for, you know, here, I think on stormwater. We've converged in one, you know, one development in town, you know, with stuff that actually was kind of post, post, post-out really, but that said, we're really sensitive to that, and ensuring that the system's designed appropriately.
It's part of the end of design.
Exactly.
Fair review, open design.
So, I assure you, it, it, it will be a very important item in the design that will make sure it gets done, and the water's not moving off the site.
Thanks. One, one other quick question from Nick. The nine houses that are gonna be built, are they all gonna be done pretty much at the same time, or is this gonna be a one-off kind of thing?
Well, they are intended to go off at the same time. That's the general concept with the two entrance roads is to have the multifamilies on the lower side, and the single families on the other side, so they're not competing.
But I think what you're asking, is this gonna be a seven-year process?
We're literally seeing around, I think. Yeah, it's not my.
We're really sensitive to that, I tell you. This is important. So, if there's teeth that we can put into the approval, I trust, trust me, it's, it's we experience it too. We're all in town. We drive around, and then these projects that go on forever. So, whatever we can do, and that's informed a, a lot by our planner, you know, what we can and can't do, but I'm, I'm all for trying to make sure that people get off, you know, once they're approved and they do break ground, I mean, they don't, you don't have to tell them they have to break ground within two years, you know, on a permit. But once they do break ground, you know, it needs to go. It's not gonna be a ten-year thing. You know, so it needs to be reasonable. It's not fair to all the other people around the development.
I just want to be real clear about this. I mean, if this development goes the way of the prior one, that we're looking at, you're gonna have a lot of.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, you know, we're talking all that.
That's what we. Yeah, my intention is, you can see with the open space, is I don't want to have a lot of. And ultimately, I'm looking to archify my own new space myself, and I want to have as much green space around me as possible.
And neighbors that like it.
Right. Thank you for, thank you for the comments. Those are really important, too. Anybody else?
What percentage of that?
What's your, your name, your name to identify yourself if you can, for them, for the record, like, Eastman, off of, to Charles Street, okay?
Just had a question about the, of like the vulnerable area, the land area. Has it been, like, studied? Do you know how much of it is rock ledge versus, you know, just something that you could put a basement in right away?
I don't, I don't have that exact number to answer you. We do have extensive, possible testing included in the area. And same to what I just said about demolishing the whole world over there. I don't want to make it look like the home. So, we're pretty much just trying to minimize the footprint as much as humanly possible, which is why we advise this latest player to minimize rock and more issues like that.
Diamond ball of glassing, or would it be like chis, manual chiseling?
I, I don't know on here right now, the stage we're at. But personally, last thing, this is what they're on the ground, so we get it over, rather than camera. I don't know what type of rock it is, and I don't know how glassable or chipable it is, but it's too big to tell them. Ideally, I don't want to get into any, but, which is why we're more of a bio.
So, is the intention go slab-on-grade on any of these due to the rock?
Um, I don't, I don't.
I get it, okay.
That'd be one way.
But that's.
Reduce your rock. Another one, the number one reason why it's on the subject system on the lower road is to minimize. is to minimize impacts that we would have in terms of rock removal and mitigating that. So that's why we should always revise.
How extensive is the test pit or call it, you know, ledge profile that you've done so far on site?
Ah, it's small. So I, I haven't done any yet. Uh, once this goes through, uh, then um, if you want to help, will allow us to go do. Operating with our.
And we tried to, we have to wait till April, so we've started to try and get on, um, the schedule to actually start the testing.
Right, but you can, that's for, um, you know, doing your perks, but I, I, you know, for your profile. I'm sure you want to get a little further in the permitting process, but that'll, that'll tell you a lot, right?
Yeah, as we approach uh, the sign, right, we'll be.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Mike. That's a good question too. Um. Any other questions? Any, any other questions uh, online?
Uh, Mr. Chair, could I make a comment?
Sure.
I, I, I just wanted to put on the record that, that I, I, I am, my displeasure that you did not let my attorney speak. I, I feel as though the, he had uh, some comments to make on the presentation that were germane. Uh, he didn't give, he wasn't given an opportunity to speak. Um, you know, the, the conversation went all the way to basements and, and slab on grades, but we didn't talk about the rudimentary uh, aspects of this plan related to safe and adequate access, um, impact on a butters, um, roadway construction and whatnot. So I, I want that on the record that I feel as though um, you did not give my attorney ample time under the public meeting law to speak. And uh, we will uh, move forward with uh, my attorney speaking to their attorney and hopefully town council as well.
Okay, nobody. All right, anybody else? So Daniel, will we just continue?
Um, you can continue the hearing until our next meeting with that is over. Yeah, um, February twenty seventh is our next.
Is that the plan? And um, you have a motion there? To Brian. So Carl will read the motion. This will continue the meeting uh, to our next C P C meeting. And again, I, I just want to say a welcome, at the time, Mr. Ron, your attorney. Again, we'll have a little bit more time in the schedule and we'll also again have our chairman here who wanted to be here. I hope you can respect that. Thanks.
I, 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 I.
That's it. I don't wanna, I don't, I'm not recognizing you, okay? We're trying to do a motion right now.
Okay.
Terrell, I'm going to give you a planning commission vote to continue the public hearing for seven Charles Street and two point nine A M until Tuesday, February twenty seventh, twenty one, four, eighteen. Secondly, second. Motion in second. Any discussion? Jeremiah, any discussion?
Nope.
Okay, thanks. I just got to move to a vote. We'll roll call since we got online. Uh, Jeremiah, I'll say you.
Hi.
All right.
Hi.
Yep.
All right.
And I, Dave Riddell, uh, it's four, so uh, the, we have court in favor, non-opposed, the motion carries. We'll continue the meeting until the next C P C meeting.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All good, huh?
Thank you, John.
Okay, thank you. Uh, votes to, uh, two of both. Jeremiah, close the meeting. Jeremiah, there's a vote to close the meeting. How's it you?
Uh, hi.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi.
That's it, guys. The record shows, we're in favor, non-opposed, yes. Yeah, I'm more than.